Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to our City Council of Greenwood. This is Monday, July the 12th at approximately 7:05 PM. Mr. E. Paul Row, please.
Mason Brown.
Here.
Rock Meeker.
Here.
Ron Howell is absent. Daniel McDaniel is absent. Tim Terry?
Here.
Lance Terry is absent. We do have a forum in addition to the mayor.
Thank you. If you would all rise, please, we will begin our meeting this evening with a prayer, and I'm going to ask those Palm Road, Bud and Boyd, if you would mind giving us some prayer this evening, followed by our place of allegiance by Chief Will Dawson.
Father, we come before you tonight, Lord, we thank you for the privilege that you have given us to live in the greatest country in the world. Father, we thank you for the city of Greenwood. We thank you for the leaders of our town, and God, we ask that you give them wisdom and knowledge. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
May you be seated. At this time, I would ask the councils to consider approval for the minutes for our June 7 regular council meeting. Can I make that motion?
Second.
You have a motion in a second?
Brown.
Yes.
Meeker.
Yes.
Mayor Kinzel?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Recognitions and acknowledgements. We have some extinguished, distinguished guest with us this evening. I'd like to acknowledge and thank Ms. Reese Brewer for being here tonight with Wapahdiddy and Stacy Williams. Stacy's new to the Wapahdiddy game, I believe, up there. I embarrassed her at the last meeting I was in, so I'll try not to do that tonight. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. And also, in our presence is our junior fair board, who I had the privilege and honor of visiting with, I don't know, about a month and so, I guess now, at the fairgrounds. And these guys have gotten together and to form a junior fair board. And I think the idea is that they will carry on and become the fair board, and then other young folks will come behind them and do the same. So I had a great time visiting with them. They entered, they looked and sought out somebody that was really old in Greenwood to talk to about fairs in the past, and for some reason they picked me. So I don't know what happened, but anyway, what a good visit, and thank you for coming, being here tonight. And if, I believe Mason Williams is going to speak on behalf of the junior fair board. If you want to go ahead and come up, we'd welcome you to do that. Sebastian County Fair Board, sorry, I shouldn't make that easy specific.
Well, I'd just like to introduce myself. Like you said, I'm Mason Williams, and I'm the president of the junior fair board. And we're here today because you invited us to come to this meeting. I'd just like to thank you for letting us have the opportunity to come and talk to you. And today, I'd like to tell you what we've got out of the fair, my life this year. And so the theme of this fair is last from the past, because, you know, this previous year we had COVID. And so this next coming year in the fair, we'd like to go back to what the fair used to be like before COVID, and we would like to do the fair in full swing. And so the fair schedule for this year is looking pretty normal, and we're having Dan and Fireman, Heidi, and Mystic Magic shows that we, just like we used to have before COVID. And our showing with the FFA animals, the porridge animals, is going to look pretty normal, just like before, before COVID. And we're also having our live show, like normal, at 5:00 PM on Saturday. And this year, we had at least 13 vendors and five trucks already registered to be in the fair for us. And so I'd say it looks pretty good this coming year for the fair, and I feel like that now that COVID has kind of calmed down, that we'll be able to have the fair just like we used to have, and it'd be as better as it is. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it, you guys. I'm all about photo ops. If you could stick around for four hours, we'll get our picture made here. And by the way, you have to. You can't leave once you have a few minutes. That usually doesn't work with anybody else. So thank you, guys, for coming. And I'm excited about the fair, too. As you know, we just had our Freedom Fest on the square. Went wonderfully, and I think the fair will be the same, and hopefully things will continue to get back to some normalcy as we may know it, hopefully. So thank you, guys, for being here. Appreciate what you do. It's cool. I have a real quick story. I talked to them all up at the fairgrounds, and they told, went around the room and told me what they show at the fair, and it became apparent that most of them show, I believe it's called Market Sheet, Market whatever. And I said, I think I know what that means. And one of them said, it does. It means they're going to be dead in a little while after they're sold. And I asked, I said, is that not, is that not kind of tough for you, raising these things? And then he did name them, and I can't remember. You can raise your hand or not. He said to me, I named them after the month that they're going to be slaughtered. Right? Am I right? So August or something, I don't know. So they grow attached, but not real. So anyway, that's pretty cool. I showed baye chickens when I was there, so we did not eat them, by the way. Thank you, guys, for being here. Appreciate you. Also, in the audience this evening is Alex Clatten with South Coast Town. So thank you for being here. I gave her instructions how to spell my name, as the case of the circumstances. I'm kidding. Thank you, guys, for being here, and everybody else that's here. Thank you. Committee reports. We'll get right into it. South Sebastian County Forest Girls Club has issued a report. Kenny's not here. Any questions about that, you can obviously get with Danielle or myself, and we'll try to get some answers. Kenny, that didn't sound right. Whatever the issues may be, we'll talk to Kenny and see if we can get any questions answered. SRCA, same goes with those folks. The tenure citizen center, I know they're going strong back kind of to normal over there, from what I understand, part of the attendance and that sort of thing. They do still have some issues with the building. I'm going to report to council. As we all know, that's kind of an issue for us, that we pay for to keep that building up and going. But there are some issues that we'll have to address pretty soon. And if anybody knows a grant that will, anybody at all, nobody in particular, Reese, knows a grant that we can apply for to get a new building, we would love to get, go in that direction. Or if a contractor in the room, I don't know, anybody would build one for free. So, anyway, that's that. Parks Commission, I don't want to sit there. Mr. Goldstein? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, Mr. Henry, Mr. Sherry, you all got comprehensive reports of what's going on with the parks. Anybody have any questions? Just have my line to thank. I'm Parks Director of the Long and Tall Freedom Fest, 12th of July. Thank you.
Absolutely. I think, thank you. Whoa, whoa, where are you going? I have a microphone. Any gavel. Thank you all for coming. You guys are the best. Hey, Jill, I was just wondering, are the windows broken or are they broke out, as I've been reading here?
There was, there was two broken, two broken by disc offers on the back. Yeah, they're, they're throwing like me. And then the one on the front was broken inside by a kid. It just, just happened to be all way in front, buddy?
Never happened when I was first here.
I don't think it happened when bikini was either.
Of course, nobody was very good at disc off at that time, either.
Yes.
That's it. And I tell you, that's a hazard well worth it. That's why their tournaments brings actual a lot of tax dollars to Greenwood and a lot of people to Greenwood. So that's a pretty good, pretty good swap off. I would also commend Tammy and everybody, and thank everybody, the street department, everybody, somebody from every department, I think, except for, I don't know, maybe finance, was at the Freedom Fest to help out. Fifty percent of the planning department, fifty percent. I mean, one of the two showed up to help, of course, street fire.
It cannot be done by one person.
No, it takes, it takes the village, for sure. And as Lance would like to say, he does say, it's finally kind of a well-oiled machine, and just kind of, not that you don't put a lot of work into it, but we had a great crowd, and everything went very well. So congratulations. Waterways Water Commission, I'll see Mr. Bailey here. I know there's an item on the agenda a little bit later. I think Tom's going to handle that as far as amendment or resolution, budget resolution. Reese, did you want to speak to us now, or I mean, you were preventing to say for four hours?
I thought we weren't elected.
You're not, but I do make exceptions for people I really like. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members for having us here tonight. We are tasked with regional transportation planning by the federal government. And what we do is we do a long-range transportation plan that lists out all these different projects for the next 20 years. And we're in the beginning portion of that, beginning to develop that plan. And you all have, like, different trails and road systems that you might like to move forward into that plan. So we've got some handouts that you can scan the code or text or voicemail, and tell us some of your ideas for different roads or projects that you'd all like to see done. In this plan, at one time, was an illustrative project for Greenwood bypass. And as you know, the city brought forward some funds to do a match. And now that project will be moving forward. So sometimes you could have things that are illustrative, which is basically a Christmas list, and it can be brought forward through other means. And basically, what this list does is just tell us what we want to do in the future, and gives us a plan to move forward, so that we can allocate those federal funds to those projects. The dollars go to RDOT, and also the counties, and obviously, some of the cities. And some of the projects that we've helped, the city of Greenwood, with the cap grant for Highway 10, the previous one for Phase 1. So that's another type of work that we do. And we're just looking really for input on trails, sidewalks, mobility facilities, roads, things where you might think that there are some issues. Clearly, we can't always see 20 years out. We don't know exactly what will be happening with traffic and congestion and those type of things. But since I don't live in Greenwood, Stacy, our transportation, transportation planner, lives in Banjo, and we have another community as well as you all do. And so we really appreciate your input, so that we know what projects are important to you all. So I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Surely, somebody's going to say, what happened to the sidewalk on Tinsburg? I'm sorry. That's our own stuff. We're working on these, Miss Terry. Thank you. And by the way, I keep saying Wapahdiddy. I know you were up there. It's frontier in V O, obviously.
Right. But we are a part of Wapahdiddy, so we're the transportation planning division for them. And we are glad to help with transportation planning grants, bicycle and tech facilities, cap grants, and all that type of thing. And sometimes we even send grants over to Tammy that may not necessarily be in our area of expertise, but maybe something that she can take a look at. So anyway, we appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And truly, but you know, as my tenure as Parks Director and now Mayor is, you guys work hard for us, and we appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
We know we can cooperate with anything.
Our pleasure.
Thank you.
And we left copies of the flyer by the agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, ladies. Thank you very much. What's the committee report? System Forum, I do not have anyone signed up tonight to speak. If you missed an opportunity, I don't see anybody necessarily. Are you here? I'm joking, sir. Good to see you. Are you security for him? Is that what? No, okay.
No. He's not back yet.
All right. We'll move on to the, let me pause for a second. I needed to do this before we started, and I apologize for not doing, especially before the prayer. Thank you for praying for us. I caught you off guard there, wasn't it, everybody? But there are, as in all communities, there are illnesses and sicknesses and things going on, and tragedies. Greenwood has been hit very hard, I think, for a community our size in the last few months or two with issues. And we all know about those issues. But I want to say real quick about a couple of folks that need our special prayers tonight and every night. Michael Jean, who is very dear to our hearts and beloved from this community, grew up, lived here, goes to school here, now resides, is still in Greenwood, but he is in the hospital as we speak with COVID-19. And he is not doing well. He is, I think he made a slight improvement today, I believe. They were going to intubate, but they did not because of him being better a little bit. But he's, it's very serious. He sees somebody, I think, once a day for 20 minutes, and that's it. So 49 years old, just a fantastic young man. So please remember Michael. I think everybody in this room knows Michael Jean. If you don't, you should. There's not many buildings around town that has not had his, literally had his name stamped on it for his ability in the architect world. Also, Lance Terry's father, Earl Terry, I believe, they're on their way home, right? Tim, from Indy Anderson, I don't know if they reported all, but he's.
All I know is that, of course, he's getting the chemo for the cancer. He's been kind of in control, but now he's got some kidney issues, I believe, and they can't work all alone without the other. So he's in a, kind of in a gam, on which way to go. So it's not great, but he's a tough old worker.
Yes, he is. So that definitely has a good description. Earl Terry, if you know Earl Terry. But they're on their way home. They're on their way home to Sebastian Street. Reason he's not here, not yet. So, and I'm sorry, I had somebody else.
Daniel McDaniel's father?
Daniel McDaniel, thank you. My goodness, I didn't write it down. Daniel McDaniel, another councilman of ours, is on his way tomorrow morning. He has so much to do between now and early morning to take his father to.
Indy Anderson.
Indy Anderson for some type of surgery on his head. It's very serious. And he also reported to me just less than an hour ago that his mother is having some issues, too, so he's dealing with that. So he basically has rented the house wherever they're going for two weeks. And then he had to chuckle a little bit. He said, and my sister's showing up, so I just rented two bedroom house, and I don't have a place to sleep. So being prayer for that family. And again, there's so many across our community and surrounding areas. I just want to mention those in particular, because I know them, obviously personally. So remember those folks, if you would, and everybody else that's dealing with issues in our prime community. So moving on to the financial report, Mr. Tom Marsh.
Okay. What I want to let you know is that in the future, the reports will be sent to you electronically, but instead of giving you the highlights verbally, you will also get a narrative. And the narrative will highlight certain pieces of information, such as your city sales, county sales tax, A and P, some of the issues that might be coming up regarding the revenues, the expenses, where we are as percentage of collections. But that'll be coming to you as a narrative, and at that point, when it comes to the financial report section, it'll be added to committee reports, and we'll have an opportunity to ask questions for that. That's more of a security, I don't know what that. But I do want to point out a couple of things. This did not happen this time, because I've already sent out the packet before I decided to do this. The city sales and use tax budget is 10% of growth for this year, 2021, but the same period, June over June, was up 8.2%. Our cumulative growth for 2021 year-to-date is 16.4%, which is a 6.4% growth above budget. And it's actually, though, down 1.8% from the previous five months. So it took a little negative trend, but it's still way up above what our anticipated budget revenue stream was for city sales and use taxes. County sales tax budget is 5.6% growth this year. The same period, June, growth is 21.9%. County sales tax is actually taking off in the opposite direction. Cumulative growth year-to-date for 2021 is 15.3%. That is an increase of 1.2% over the current cumulative, over previous, the previous five months. And the current cumulative growth for the year is 9.7% above budget. Like I said, the county sales tax is actually growing at a much greater rate than what our growth projection was for a lot of reasons. One is there's a lot of robust spending within the whole Sebastian County. A and P budget growth was 8%. The current cumulative growth is 1.6% above budget. I will point out, however, and I'm reasoning that out, is that cumulative growth has been declining month to month to month. February was up 23% cumulative growth, 15% in March, 13% in April, 10% in May, and we're at 9.61% cumulative growth in the month of June. We budgeted 8%. So we're, we're at the point where we're coming closer to, and probably will stabilize at about that 8% growth. That projection was done with the cooperation of those that are on the A and P commission, the own businesses, and they say that they budgeted an 8% growth, and that's what they anticipate the year to end up. So I'm kind of anticipating us to be close to our A and P number. I also gave you on that schedule an average monthly sales. The average monthly sales over the last four years is up 43.98% in prepared food sales for those that participate in the A and P tax. On your unaudited consolidated financial report, our total city revenues as a percentage of budget is 43.34%, which for six months, that's fairly good, because we don't have a steady average stream every month. It's not 1/12 of our revenue comes in. It does come in, unusual throughout the year. Our city expenses, however, is 32.82%, which generated a year-to-date surplus of $1.1 million. I do give you the capital spend, however. We have a budgeted capital spend of $4.3 million as of the six months, and in June 30th, we've spent $760,000, which is only 17.33% of our capital. There is a lot of activity that is currently occurring, so you'll start seeing a lot more spend. Usually, that happens during the summer months when the weather is better. That leads us to the statement of cash flows. We had a net decrease in cash of $97,000 for the month of June, but overall, for the six months, our cash is a net increase of $769,000, three quarters of a million. Our cash balance has grown since the beginning of the year by 5.76%. I will point out, however, that the investment committee has rekindled itself and has reactivated, and we're holding preliminary discussions right now with some banking investing companies to, in preliminary discussions, looking at ways of investing idle cash that we have that we don't need for immediate need, and that will be used to fund and/or for contingency purposes, or contingency needs, kind of like a reserve for each of the departments. And we're identifying what those idle cash amounts are, and we're looking at a short-did, long-term investment strategy for that. And we're getting ready to hold preliminary budget discussions of every department, so that we can be ahead of the game this year. And our fiscal audit, or our 2020 audit from the Legislative Audit Group, has been pushed back till the 1st of August. It was supposed to start, well, it was soon, probably this week. However, they just contacted me today. They're happy to push it back another couple of weeks. They will give me a date closer to when they're going to start sometime in the next couple of weeks. And that's the highlights.
Any questions? Mr. Tom. Thank you, sir. Sebastian, thank you for this all. Appreciate it. At this time, we have one item to add to the agenda for council's approval. We'll make it number eight. I'll ask Mr. E., what she has to list.
Neptunism discussion, Police Department.
What was that? Discussion, sorry.
Neptunism discussion, Police Department.
Number eight. Okay. Old Business, number one, is planning and building apartments, repeal and replace ordinance, number 20-17, building permit fee schedule. It's our second reading. Mr. Bell?
Mayor, Council, Mr. E., this item is repeal and replace ordinance, uh, 20-17, building permit fee schedule, the second reading. This is the fee schedule that Hunter has worked really hard on, bringing us up to, as close to the city of Port fifth on their permitting fees, so that we get away with the, get away from somebody really saying that we're more expensive to do business with in Port fifth. And we've kind of disproven some of those things, and we had some adjustments. They all appeared in last month and put on the first reading. And I'd like to move forward to the second reading. If you have any questions, Hunter's here. Hunter put in a lot of time on this, and we'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
You probably just said no changes from.
No changes from the last reading.
Any questions? Make a motion. I approve this for the second reading by Tyler. Only.
Second.
And motion, second.
Mason Brown.
Yes.
Meeker.
Yes.
Mayor Kinzel.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
An ordinance repealing Greenwood ordinance, number 20-17, and all other ordinance that's in conflict there with establishing fees for electrical plumbing, construction, blasting, special haul, can, and permits in front of it.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, number two, Old Business, the Police Department, resolution to amend policy, or police policy handbook. Chief Dawson.
Similar by has the policy. Most departments across the country have a policy using outside records. Obviously, some of the big cities have their own record, or have a lot of other services. Obviously, not that they do the standard. I basically took a bunch of different policies and kind of picked and choose through what fit us here as a city. Basically, the high points that I want to point out is one, the representative police department came on scene. For them to be professional, obviously, for us to be able to do background checks to make sure someone shown up isn't in conflict with their background, have felonies in their background for certain different things. When you go to this business, obviously, it should be presentable as they are, like I said, a direct reflection of not only Police Department, but the city. They should have a office that is easily in sight when they pull up to retrieve their property. But all those things in there basically cover those type of things, and a process where they come to us, request to be on the red rotation. And like I said, they'll run the background checks. We're going to make sure they have all equipment. We're going to inspect their trucks every year, make sure they have the proper equipment. We're going to make sure they're safe on scenes. We're going to make sure that people get the property back. Basically, the same way they left it, whether it was just in an accident, or it was stolen by us for a certain reason. But it's stored in a storage yard that by standards has to have a six-foot fence, and should have a fire across the top of it. It has a light that shines down into that lot, something to turn for people to get in there, steal things. We've never had this before. Most cities have it, and that's why I was trying to get it in place, to cover those type of things. We do have record companies that call from different cities when they get on the road station. There is a response time, it's middle of night. The last thing they'll do is sit there, wait an hour or something for someone to get there, to get available. Specifically, if you have D W I, you need to get them tested. There are certain things that have time constraints and wait for a record for a long time, middle of night. It's not something that we can do. We want to make sure that people showing up aren't an increased danger to the officers, like I said, with their backgrounds. And we'd like to know who's coming out to the scene, because they are in our bus. I mean, we're requesting them to come to the scene, so if something happens, it's on us. I've seen unsafe things before. I've seen new record companies show up and ask me for my advice on how to be a director, or how to get the wreck car out of the woods. And I don't know if it's a car, so, but I can tell if it's safe and if it's unsafe. And they should at least have some knowledge of the work and the equipment that people use to pull this car out, and I think they're. I don't think what else is there. I think that's the gist of what's in there. There is a part of that, I mean, doctor business, it needs to be presentable. Like I said, I've had, I'm not up here to say names, but I've had people that complain about feeling unsafe at certain businesses when they go pick up their property. unsafe at certain businesses when they go pick up their property. And for me, that's embarrassing as, as like I said, they're a direct reflection of us, and for them to show up and not know where the office is and not feel like they're at the right place, there's things that concern me. I had one person call and say that they called and get, or they got a quote on how much it was a good car. Well, the insurance company called and the price went up. That's the type of things that can happen, and they directly backed on us with that screaming police department, and we don't get any money from those, that's just someone taking control of that vehicle, you know, or so we're not responsible for it out on the highway, it's got to go somewhere. But I want to know that it's gone to a place that obviously say people feel comfortable going in there to retrieve their items.
Chief, the grandfather in, as far as not being within the safe limits, somebody here is causing somebody down with this.
Uh, no, the record is not within C limits, and they are our longest-standing member on our record rotation. They, I took the policy to them, said, "If you see anything wrong with this, then you guys are the longest with the most experience," and they did. They, we do have a record company that's supposed, every company's supposed to send us their price sheet, you're supposed to have it posted where people can see it, and I mean, that shouldn't change about the year. So part of that is they're going to send us their prices at the end of the year, we're going to approve those. There shouldn't be a big disparity between each ones, and I, one of the companies, I asked for the price list two months ago, and they said, "I've got it, so I'm going to own it out and do this policy." I was trying to get an accumulation of all three and make sure they're, they're close, but one company didn't send me their price list. I asked one of the ones, I've asked three times, but we want to be fair, I don't want someone with, you know, that we call the tow, which we call her next up wrecker, and they get it, it's two hundred dollars, but if I would call the other person, it would be a hundred dollars, and there shouldn't be that much disparity in the record, the price list.
Mr. En, have you went through all this?
I went through it several times over the years, yes, and this is something that is in discretion with council, which everyone does.
Don't you be head of tow people here? I mean, I don't have a problem with this, I just, I'm just, I see here we've got Arkansas Toyota Recovery Board that's have been a got some state cloud, but I just wonder how, what kind of honor, or reach of honor we have to take when towing companies are.
What's the privilege? It's not a right for them to be on our record rotation.
Yeah, the only reason we did it before, we just, we thought that was an ordinary parent thing to do, and I think we're chief of scanning, but that's easily something to abuse, but clearly apparently has been, and private practice, I don't think it's something.
And my thing is, you know, this is a rotation, you know, if the person involved in the accident has a record company that's.
She has a preference, that's why I have my accident, and the special kind of keeps the rotation, and basically if they don't have a preference, we just call the next up, not knowing if they're, you know, obviously, they keep track of that. Over the years, I know, all the way back to Don Loes complaining that he's not getting calls, but believe it or not, there are large majority people that do have requests for their own record that they use, and M and M is the popular one because I've been around long enough to assume, and they do a good job, and they're who I go to, I don't have to question a lot of records just because of their experience. So, yeah, I mean, they can ask for their own record company. Depending on time constraints, I've had people ask for one out of Oklahoma, I don't have time for a car that's hit there, it's crashed and the roadway, or someone comes up home, but, you know, if it's a local record company, they can get there in a reasonable amount of time, that's what we do.
Well, on the page, I mean, there's not, section seven, tow and storage rages, it's supposed to be rates or something. I've already emailed Tristan about.
Old business, Tom, I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Anyways, just wanted to point that out in the record and break that.
Does the county has a rotation built through, they have some similar to this?
They have.
Oh, we're trying to make people invite you to some of our towing guys to them, or like hack a PD call on any of our folks that probably got their own maintenance or whatever.
You know, some cities I think are, they use one particular one, they don't use a whole group of them like four seventy others we do, but I try to keep to business policy limits, and we put the number four total, it's just we don't get enough towels to spread out, and someone can make their business off, I can talk about, you know, M and M does, kind of work, and so those pieces, what used to be sat out there in the towing, as far as I can tell, the only thing that will allow record is doing a store and they can make them come pick it up, or he may have to take it to a shop for them, or, but he doesn't do any repair work, he doesn't do any body work, which is typical for these companies that are on record rotations to do one, to, you're not, definitely agree with me, you're not going to make enough money off of this core business.
I think it's good that you, you know, do a, make sure they have, you know, proper insurance and that you have to do a kind of history check on there because, yeah, I think that's just, I think it's, my lie last night, you know, and when I looked around, you know, I think that I felt comfortable knowing that, you know, the record of this, the, our rotation's been checked out and everything.
We definitely want them to be safe, like I said, I've seen a lot of unsafe things over the year, we want to make sure that they've got their equipment best on, that they're loading cars in a safe manner, and then help them build them because it's, oh, real bad if the car's not secured on the back of the record properly, and I've seen, I've seen them come off the record before because they weren't secured properly, so we just want to make sure that they're doing the job they should be doing as a direct reflection of us, and I, I'm sure anything's possible, so we can be tied to a lawsuit if something happened because we called that wreck to come pick our cars.
I'll make a recommendation, I read, approve the, the resolution to be had.
Second.
And motion is second.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Maker.
Yes.
Mary Kinzel.
Yes.
And Terry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number four, New Business Street Department, resolution to authorize sale of equipment to Sebastian County. This is in regard, uh, quit, Chad, don't come up, you don't have to, I'm sure they have questions. This is, this is the paper and roller that we bought three years ago, four years ago.
Two thousand seventeen on the roller, I believe, and eighteen on the paper.
We talked about it in Cincinnati, about we thought it was a good idea, we now realize it wasn't the great idea that we thought it was, we decided to sell it, and we had an offer from the county to purchase this, and I'll take, let Chad take you through that process if you want to. And the county has, has made an offer and has also already accepted it through the court, if we so incline together, be ready to purchase.
Questions?
Sold.
So?
Now, it was, it was the mayor that made that recommendation for us to get the paper in with, is that it?
I'm calling the mayor.
I will admit to being talked into maybe as a street director that that was a wonderful idea, yes, that is correct.
Was it Charlotte where?
Might have been, you know, now that I think about it, I think it was right before I came in office. That was not.
I think it was Rod and Lance.
Rod and Lance were definitely full blown, let him get his paper.
I don't know that Lance was, funny, I think Lance was here.
He absolutely was not, and he's giggled since then out loud, so. We see a way out, if I could just bow to those in charge and say we, we have found a way out of this and not.
I mean, intentions were good.
Were good.
Absolutely. And I think in the three years that we've had it, I think we've only used it three times.
I believe it's correct.
What we found is we just weren't, we didn't have the knowledge as a whole, we had a few people that had the basic knowledge of how to do it and get out on the job, and it was just, it was kind of a circus. So, just the way we're structured, being able, if we were able to be out on it every day, of course we'll get better, but we just don't have the time to do it, so there's something else that's lacking, so.
Well, I agree with that panel, I think, I wouldn't have it approved, the rest of the, valid?
Yes.
We have a motion, second.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Maker.
Yes.
Mary Kinzel.
Yes.
And Terry.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
That was almost painless.
We'll get some of that county money back.
There you go. Well, can I believe they're ready to be in receipt of this and give us a check as displayed?
Any partner who said it, they got the check, we got it. They're ready to put it forward.
And I would say too, this council's not aware, and I think you are, we continue to partner with the county, and they continue to partner with us on, on many projects, for instance, the payment of the parking lot that the Greenwood City laid, they did that for cost of material, so we, we had a great relationship with County Road Department, I think.
And they'll, they give us only side moving cutter, tire cap.
I don't even know what that is, but yes. So we, we have a good relationship with those folks, and I think it's a good deal for everybody. And I don't, that's perhaps for a second, that this paper will probably be used in their future for us somewhere down the road.
Probably on, maybe on Ware Road.
Or, yes, on Ware Road that we share with the county.
Or on Chiswick.
Right, I'm going to say, boy, we need on Chiswick, I mean, that's a post that'd be related to that out there.
By bridge.
By bridge, and Chad has helped that relate, we have, we have always had a fairly good relationship with the county, and Chad has improved upon that even as we speak too, so. All right, number five is the Finance Resolution to amend budget for professional fees, water, sir. Mr. Marsh.
At the last Water Super Commission meeting, regularly scheduled meeting, they approved two projects that are unbudgeted, as both of them are going to be greater than five thousand dollars, and they're going to be able to fund this through using existing funds in their city sales and use tax accounts for these projects. One is to promote cooperation with the Parks Department for the city of Greenwood because it is a water feature. They are looking to cover the cost of design and engineering fees for the proposed splash pad, as well as a related impact study for the new east side development, which would entail water and sewer vote. The cost of the professional fees in the impact study, which they did significant research on and got estimates back, is not to exceed thirty-two thousand for the water department for both projects, and forty-five thousand for the sewer department for both projects. What we've done in section one and two is broke out each of the costs by the type of project, so we're looking at the Bell Park, design work for the splash pad is not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, and the second section would be for the proposed impact study, estimated cost of twenty-seven thousand, that will be split between water and sewer, so a bolt will be covered by the city sales and use tax and allocated to each appropriate department. Looking for approval on this.
I'll be the usual bad guy on this deal. What's, on the splash pad, is there a war guy here, Commissioner?
No, actually not.
But I can get John Bailey on the phone available to be called up.
Well, I mean, this goes back to two thousand six, when we passed the three-quarters of the sales tax, and splash pad was one of, I'll do the Parks Director, we'll talk to him.
He was a dandy though.
Yeah, but I'm just looking at those water and sewer guys paying for professional fees for some of the parks, so, who might persuade me?
Both commissions approved it.
Yeah, it was actually, I don't know, and Tim's here to speak on that, the Parks Commission, certainly Joe, the Parks, the Water Waste Department, go ahead.
What, what I, what I.
Chad, come on, come up here, sorry, thank you.
What, what I recall them saying to us was that it's not, it's not going to be, what they're, what they're talking about is the design of getting the sewer and water to us, not the design of the splash pad itself, because they don't want, they don't want somebody in my department designing or having something to do with getting it to us, because it's not going to be just for us, it will, it will serve other purposes besides just for the parks. It, yeah, so that's, that's, and it sounds kind of weird even when I say it to myself, but that's, that's the way I try to explain this, maybe.
It will make possible splash pad, but it's not.
Yes, but it's not just for the splash pad, and even if we weren't going to have a splash pad, it, it's a good idea to get it on across the road anyway, in that area. I mean, that's my little tiny discussion.
Mr. Goldstein.
And water is down on Main Street, and our splash pad would be as close as we can to Main Street.
Yeah, this, yeah, this splash pad is the, the new nineteen acres was purchased by Parks Commission, that road is now, I forget the name.
Fox Run.
Fox Run Road, basically it's a corner, or just up the road.
When you're on Main Street, if you look up Fox Run, you'll see it does a ninety-degree turn, the splash pad's going to be right in that area. So, the sewer is just across the street over on Miami, in that area-ish, from my knowledge, and so they're just getting it across.
Which is almost, which is almost, I don't want to use the word ludicrous, but I guess I just did, to think that we don't have sewer.
There's a few houses in that area that doesn't have.
I mean, that, we're talking Main Street, so.
You're talking about, like, for the splash pad, so people will have bathrooms and showers.
Yes, yes.
Correct, which will make the sewer available to these other homes, and I don't have any drawer, nobody's here to tell me. There's a few homes there that does not have sewer.
Okay, I'll buy that.
Thanks.
Buy, buy that, is that motion?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I got the motion.
Second. The motion is second to pass this resolution?
The second.
Mr. Brown.
Okay. Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Maker.
Yes.
And Terry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Tom, Tim, everybody, thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda is Parks Department Resolution, resolution to amend budget for capital approvals. Pass it, Ms. Farley.
A week ago, the vice mayor to me had said that one of the mowers, which is, has been around since two thousand six.
Since the Ford.
And, since that, that's Ford truck, and it is basically on splash plate, and because it's remoting season and, and grass gets high really quick, and rain, rain and snowing and sun, it all happens together. I, when I originally owned and bought a mower for the Parks Department, and it was, so I'm kind of asking for forgiveness, but I've kind of let, it was one of those things that kind of had to be, had to happen, or we would be behind and people would be calling you wondering why, and you're getting mowed. The Dixie Chopper that went down has been kind of repaired, so in case, God forbid, one of those, the cut cadets go down, that we at least have a spare. Even with the Street Department, I said, you know, in case they need an extra or whatever, we have a one that's livable, but that's what, that is for, and is that, is that all on you?
You have another item in there, which is the fifteen-two.
That's.
Do you need it?
Yeah. Sorry. The other one is the new nineteen acres, it's going to, it needs to be cleared, there's a lot of undergrowth and, and trees that need, you know, little, little trees that need to go, so we can kind of see what the nineteen acre is calculated and exactly what all we can do. So, Prime Acres is a company that does the forest mulching, if you have been out on Highway ten, Highway ten and that Harmony Road, that corner lot that has been underbrushed and the malt just been, just few, whatever, has been placed back on the, on the floor, that's the people that's going to be doing this, and it's over my threshold, they're going to charge fifteen thousand, two hundred dollars, and we need to put that in it, and it wasn't budgeted, but we have money to do it, it's just getting it where we need to have it.
And no, any, anything was used to that?
No, no, it wasn't. And I did, I didn't look. And I did, I did look around at other companies, but these people came highly recommended, and I went to see several places that they had already done, and it looks great, so.
Mr. Goldstein, oh, sorry.
I had suggested this company to our church, and they've come out with the equipment, took care of about two acres, and did a great job.
And they're local?
And they're local, yes, you're right.
And the spot that you're talking about there on Mount Harmony, and it looks good.
It does, it is. So, um, yeah.
And that's this morning, by the way, I talked to the landlord, I was hoping for a bronze.
Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A.
I can walk there.
Mattress, sir.
Mattress. I'd like a motion without resolution.
Second.
A motion second to that resolution.
I'll probably go with, yeah.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Derrick?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, number sevens, is actually, it's under building and planning, and it is a ordinance to declare a 90-day mortuary on streetlight direction and emergency passage attached. So, to give you a background here, why this is on here, and Mr. Bell and I spoke this morning, along with all the other department heads about this particular item, may not need this, I have not, I didn't take it off because I wanted to at least discuss the issue with you. Mr. Mr. Buddy Lloyd is here, who is in charge, I wanna say, he's still in charge of the lighting on what was supposed to have been Douglas Lee Kinslow Avenue, but ended in Lynn Drive or something, for some reason, Linwood, and the lighting is yet to be put in place. I'm gonna tell a quick story, then Buddy, you wanna fix this, you're more than willing to do it. It comes to my attention that Mr. Lloyd was ready to put up some lights, I believe, not to throw anybody in the bus, but our previous street director had conversations with Mr. Lloyd about this project, what to put, what he should put up according to our own ordinances and laws, if you will, and guidelines from the city. Our previous street director said to him that he was just mainly, he wanted LED lighting, and it was not an interest, and I'm paraphrasing a little bit. But forgive me, everybody involved, that it wasn't so much the poles that was an interest as long as we got LED lighting, and Mr. Lloyd is prepared to do that. We, since then, I kinda got wind of this, if you will, and after, and I think all of you would agree, that myself and all of us have said many times, or have been quoted as saying, if you will, when we build a new street in the City of Greenwood, we expect and require, quote, decorative lighting, curb and gutter, even sidewalks on either side or both sides, depending on the type of street. We, and I say we, I have asked everybody, I said, good eye, and that doesn't include me, as you can see, to look through ordinances, amended ordinances, resolutions, things stuck on the wall, to, to say that very thing about decorative lighting. No one, and I called Mr. Powell, and as you know, who is a leader of that, a very persuasive leader of that conversation, and I called Mr. Powell to ask him where we could find that, not to disprove it, but to have it, so we can have that for Mr. Lloyd as he continues this project. We can't find it. We looked at everything that Mr. Powell had suggested, this lady beside me, who is the queen of ordinances, and knows where to find stuff, and Sunny and Porsha, we can't find it, there's a little bit of language scattered through subdivision things, and things that refer to lighting, but never decorative. We know for a fact, and I know for a fact, and you know for a fact, that when we, the Highway Department came in and built the new bridge, we reconstructed the bridge on Denver Street a few years ago, several years ago now, we suggested, and they did, put decorative lighting that matched exactly what is around the town square, because that's what we want, that's what we're, I can't find anything that tells you you have to do that. I want to have that.
I don't, I don't ever recall seeing things with decorative lighting, but what you're referring to, we just kinda wanted to match the walking trail.
Right.
Theme.
Right, so.
The only thing I could find is in our subdivision regulations, under section 5.2, and it says exterior lighting quality, direction, and pattern will be included on site plan requirements. And it doesn't say anything about decorative lighting or whatever. Normally, at that point, when, when we distribute our, our construction plans, the water department gets theirs, sewer department gets theirs, street department gets theirs, street department looks at it and says, here's where I want them, here, and here's the kind that we want. And like the mayor says, there's nothing in an ordinance that specifically says we want model number so-and-so to this out of this. Now, an issue that we do have a problem with, and Chad kinda brought that up this morning, is those models sometime go away, you know, or they change. You know, same thing, one, we want them to conform to what we have around the square, but when you can't get the globes for them, or you, you know, can't get the exact base for them, then what do you do? And so that, that was what I've been thinking about today, and the, we can even make this, you know, I've looked at, here's a, that's an ordinance on streetlights regarding, I mean, that tells you how deep they go, what, you know, everything will roll about streetlights. You know, do we wanna go that direction?
No.
Or do we wanna put in our subdivision regulations that, on, under the subsection of the streets, sidewalks, and a line that says streetlight? File and placement currently approved by the City of Greenwood Street Department, that puts the burden on the street department to allow them to say, okay, the model that we have on the square has been discontinued, but another model has come out that looks just like it. Driving by, you're not gonna make to see any difference of it, like we were talking about, one of them might have seven ribs on the, on the base, well, this one might have eight, or vice versa. And this would, again, would put it where the, the street director can say, here's the streetlights I want on this project, kinda like Tim does with his water standard. He can tell a contractor, I want this valve in, in the ground next to our water. Well, you know, you want it down to the one where you're, you know, that each one of the ordinances has pictures and specifications, and, you know, like, we've seen federal government regulations that just blow you out of your mind, or do you wanna slice up something simple? And we're gonna leave this up to the street director, get as close as possible to what he feels is needed in that time. So that's my suggestion, but I'll be glad to do anything you want to on this. I can go this direction, or we can keep simple, and make sure that it happens.
The only thing I would say that, Sunny, is I totally agree, I don't, I don't think we need a document that's 100 pages long, or 10 pages long, I think it can be very simple. The only thing I would say is to add maybe something, whatever word it is, or something, because here's, the reason we're here is because it was left up to the street director, and I really don't mean to point anything at anybody, it's not the gentleman sitting here, but we left it up to him, and he related his view to Mr. Lloyd, in that I don't think, and this is Miss Mike's instance, is what we want in that, on that street, is a wooden pole and LED, and LED's fine, I'm not, I'm not anti-LED, but I don't think we would, there's another something in there that's either in that document or something else that basically says you match what's already there, my right, Hunter? And if he matched what's in there, like, in the subdivision behind him, it would be a wooden pole with regular streetlight. Now, if that's what we want, then that, that certainly leads it up to now, this gentleman, but I think we ought to have a little something in there to make, definitely not the same model, you're right, Timmy has experience, I've experienced trying to get globes for downtown, and they don't make them anymore. They only make those poles, something similar.
Right.
And by the way, Mr. Lloyd is here, and I'm gonna say something before you say it, and maybe you can, Mr. Lloyd is ready to do what the council wishes, I believe, but go ahead, sir.
One of, one of the things, whenever I spoke with Dennis, with Lynn, was we were already prepared to do decorative lighting. The poles that already they have are not off LED, and they will not interchange, and they're not gonna buy any more until they use those up. So instead of putting two lights up, we had planned to do four, two on the side that the duplexes are being, triplexes are being built now, and two on the other side. So the streets actually wanna be getting more lights, and it'll be better.
Go ahead, yeah. Let me ask a question real quick, if I can, too. Chad, we, we talked, I don't know if you and I talked that much since you became the director, but the lights on the square, didn't we replace the bulbs in the, aren't those LED now?
I think they've done some LED conversions on them.
Okay, so it's, it's possible to retrofit.
Yeah, I think-
I'm just saying that to say, you can end up, and not to dispute your, what you're saying, but you can, you can-
General Marrius said theirs would not.
Theirs, okay, so.
I'm wanting to say that Chester and Groundhog-
Correct. Back when we had Chester's, both of the electricists.
David, her house.
Now, that's all still just information, and the council, or the planning department for sure decided, you know, somebody needs to say, what is, what do we want, what's the city want out there on that road for this new triplex subdivision, if you will. And you got a great point, I mean, lighting, LED lights, and all kinds of lights do different things, you know, we know this, the decorative down around the square, or primarily decorative, they light up the square because there's like 30 of them down there, or whatever, but so.
Well, we might be able to some kind of verbiage with a photo of everything down and say, as close to this as possible.
Yeah, I, I would think that would give him something.
Yeah, but what I'm thinking, you know, streetlight, I mean, light, we're talking about a decorative pole.
Well, yeah.
Right?
We are, we're talking about-
So, I mean, I think that they should be more than just me involved in-
Now, we're trying to get it all on you, brother.
Especially in the subdivision, as far as, you know, what type of decorative pole we're talking about, the light.
Let me ask you this, I don't sit in on the, where a flat comes in for a subdivision, like what we're, like, what we've got to do up here. I mean, so, we've got this 251 law deal, and all that, is the same where they kinda won't streetlight set for the city?
It should show there.
It will, when it gets-
Okay. And then, and then the street director looks at it and says, I like that, or I would like, it's kinda like Stewart, when he looks at it, and he says, here's your fire hydrant, and he says, I'd rather have this fire hydrant moved over here, or, or something like that, to make any adjustments on that, and then they can go back and make those changes on the plan. You know, that's part of, of the, the department looking at, at what is, is their responsibility, because they're gonna take these things over when it's over with, and, and maintain them, basically, it's kinda like sidewalk, you know? They tell, they tell me how they want sidewalks built, so, and the contractor, because they're gonna maintain that for the rest of life, the entire street.
Well, I mean, we don't, we don't maintain the streetlights. We just pay the electric bill, and when there's something wrong with it, we call that the particular electric company.
Now, that's true.
So, so after that, does a group or a person that's developing the subdivision, what if he wants a certain streetlight that's decorative or whatever, I mean, if it's a high-end deal, you know, if there's only a bunch of ritzy brick houses up out there, it's kinda-
Well, I think that's, what we're talking about is the minimum standards, and the, if somebody comes in and they want the elaborate gaslight-looking ones, and-
Right, yeah.
And they can talk to Chad, and, and they can make a variance on it, just like we, you know, other variants. And we, we run into that out at Ashbridge Cove, and it's, it's kinda created some problems up there, I think, and Chad.
You know, I'm aware-
It seems like, you know, that we've had some issues getting parts for those old lights, but, but that is possible to do that under a variance, that we're saying, here's our minimum standard, basically. We want lights that at least look like this, you know, if you want one that's got the three poles, you know, or, or gaslight looking, or whatever, come and talk to us about it.
So who does the, the electric pole belong to? Light pole? Something, I mean, somewhere-
What do you think? We take what, where you, where you live, I mean, that's, that's the fire company, that's their fault.
So if we say you're gonna put up a decorative pole, and somebody runs over-
That'd be on us.
Yeah, on us.
Huh?
Well, it'd be on, be able to run over it as long as we're able to get a police report and try to recoup the cost of that, but that would kinda, it's kinda like the Wayfinder signs, you know, per se, and, you know, we-
You had to bring it to Wayford.
Yes, I did, but-
You've been directed for two months.
Oh, you're welcome. But, you know, same case there, I mean, if somebody runs over that, I mean, we have, the city has to pay the cost to replace that. And so if you take the wooden poles, that would be whether Arkansas Valley or Swetco, I think when we do decorative, that's-
And, and those companies have what they consider decorative, I've talked to them about them before, and they have them, they're not like what's on, I mean, they might get them, but they, they typically will put up a black steel pole, and it might have a base somewhat decorative, and it's typically a hangover, if you will, like, similar to what's on the trail, unfortunately, under the front, but those are decorative, but they're not classical decorative, if you will, so.
So is this a deal we're trying to put in for a regulation for developers, at their cost to put these decorative lighting in, or just go out of the city's?
Yeah, no, this, this would be on, whoever's dealt.
This would be on the developer.
We're just putting in, as he said, a standard to what the minimum standard, and if they wanna go above and beyond, then they gotta come and say, here's what we want to do.
But I think Tim, it, uh, for example, if the city did a project, like out of the lake, or something like that, and we wanted to, you know, to use the same type of lights that, you know, that would give them a guide to go by, too.
Well, I don't have any problem with any city, I mean, all of the playgrounds, everything the city should kinda look the same, you know, like, you know, the schools, all the schools around here, they've been doing all the same brick pattern, although the fire chief will do that with the firehouse, it's kinda like a ball and some-
I think what we're, what we're trying to do is make sure that this is in a, in an ordinance of some kind, whether it's our subdivision regulations, whether it's standalone ordinance, or if it's in our master street plan, or whatever, that there is something in there that, that will define a minimum standard light that we all are, are satisfied with. And again, like I said, then we can have variances from that if they wanna upgrade, but there not gonna be any less than that, and, you know, I'll be glad to do it any way that we can on there. I, I lean to the simpler thing, where that we can maybe amend the subdivision regulations, and come up with something simple, and I think Mayor, myself, and Chad can get together and come up with some verbiage, and then come back to you guys next month and say, here's, here's what we would like to put in there, 'cause I've gone back to Don, I didn't talk to Joe, but I talked to Simon, and basically, they all said, oh, well, we just tell them that we want the lights on, lights on the square, you know, if you go down to the oaks, it's lights on the square, except Pollard, if you go to the, to the bridge on Denver, it's lights on the square, you know, and, and if you go around and look, and that's what they've been doing for all these years, they've just been saying, here's what we want, and the contractors have always said, okay, but then when we had to look for it, there was nothing specifically written that says, here's, here's what we want.
And I wanna make the point that Mr. Lloyd has not come to me or anybody and said, prove to me what you want, that is not what this is about at all. It was me going timeout, when I was reported that there were, I just said, hey, let's make sure that we're doing what we, we keep saying we're gonna do. I, I think that's good, if there should be, you know, something written down, and, you know, nothing against Chad, but, I mean, just so that if there, you know, is turnover in the, in the street department, you know, we still have consistency of saying, you know, I agree to refer back to this design.
I guess, like, what we're trying to, not figure.
Yes, sir.
And I agree that there, there needs to be something in writing, and normally what happens is the developer says, this is the kinda streetlight I want you, but when you pull into the triplexes, you can stop, and at the corner north, there's a wooden pole with a light, at the end of the street, there's a wooden pole with a light. So, I mean, to me, that's why we said, hey, we'll go with the LEDs, because it matches what's already there. But in East Village, yes, we're gonna put up streetlights that will match the bellboxes, they may not be LED, if we can get LED, we will, but we will present it to Dennis, not Dennis, some sort of Chad. And I think it is important that you get something in writing, and then you don't have this situation we're in right now.
I don't know about- I don't know about decorative per se so much, but metal light poles would be a good, I mean, nothing, it's not for wood, bro.
The one on Ashbury Point, I think, are just a straight metal, are they, or not?
I think they are.
I don't think, I don't think they're like what's on the square.
And, and I thought of Ashbury Cove a while ago, the thing, because Don was the street director, he was having trouble getting particles saying, or something, they were always going out, and he was not happy with the lights, and we wanted to have it, definitely, but uh-
Well, I think, again, you know, I, I feel like your aspect with decorative, that it looks similar, you know, to, to the square. But also, I think that, you know, we should kind of, again, prefer to Arkansas Valley and Swetco, I mean, they have experience on what's kind of a reliable, you know, easily maintained.
Close to, close to getting these, you know, have a standard light, isn't it?
And Buddy's pointed out to me, or we talked about this a few times, but I think we're up in chat across here, there's an area you go, and it's very decorative, very, it is pretty, it's nice. The lighting is not necessarily, depends on what you, what you, what you look for, so.
Light, light is a big deal.
Yeah.
Neighborhood, neighborhood lighting, that it's residential, because most of the time, the, the garage lights are on.
Right.
I think, I think they're very, they're there for prettiness, they're not there for saving.
And I told you, I like the decorative stop signs, I mean, that's, they're, they're, they still say stop, but it's, they're, that matched our lights today. So, a good point made by Charles, the, the planning department, or the planning commission for sure, that can get behind this and maybe bring that back to us for you guys.
Would only be right for planning commission to do it, because they're the ones in our, in our subdivision regulation ordinance, to say that they're, so, would take it to them.
We play that to them, they have a meeting next week.
So, not to hold you up, hopefully, for a second.
That's a correct way.
A way to get this going, does that sound reasonable to you?
What would it?
To get the planning commission to get this where they want to bring back the council, and is that going to push you up, get some lights up on your road?
Doctor Buddy?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I mean, we're ready to put the lights up.
Okay, but if, but if you're stalled by the-
Bureaucracy?
Bureaucracy, planning commission putting something on the line and bringing-
If they could find the lights that, that match our street, uh, our square light, could they go ahead and do that?
I'm certainly okay with that for that, I don't know. But I like it for it to be, and I feel, I'm going to say like our streets, uh, square-
That was the original intent.
Right, exactly.
When it started off was to use that, when Simon, Simon was still street director, when this first get called, and he told me, told him or told me that that was my original intent, right, to use the same lights that we use on the square.
And so you got changed one?
Yeah, it, it has to go over.
Yeah.
I like for it to be similar to the street, uh, to the square line, here it's like.
And then we'll work, we'll work on the ordinance and bring it back to you, make them up in the next time.
Chad, if you take the lights, like here around the square, down on Denver, like, you know, they're primarily right by the edge of the sidewalk.
Right.
Seems like it's more sidewalk. So, I guess my question would be, you know, what is the required height regulation for a street light to illuminate to give the distance that you would want to light up? I think that's some type-
I think it depends on the light.
Yeah, to be as honest as it is, you better be the light.
I'm saying, you know, these lights here seem to be ten foot?
The height of the light?
Twelve foot, yeah.
Yeah.
That's going to help detect the spacing requirements between the bulbs.
It would, I mean, so, you know, where they're talking two on the other side, seems like if they meant that, but in order to get the same lighting, then you're going to have to, you know, lights.
So, good question, and here's what we would go, and, and I wasn't at this either, but I ain't announced, so that make any difference. The five light poles that we, the city, put on Denver Street, when we redid the bridge, were put in by the highway department, looking for somebody to tell me yes or no. We requested it, because that's what we have downtown, they placed them. I'm assuming we could go back and look to see if they didn't do it willy-nilly, I wouldn't think so. Uh, and so that, to me, and I may be wrong, but that spacing there should be according to some specs from somebody, that that's correct. Does that make sense? Now?
That's not a residential area, though.
No, um-
Personally, for me, I like to be a little taller and go farther, since we're having to make biddles, the less street lights, the better.
Well, if you're noticing the Oaks, they aren't much taller.
Yeah, those out there aren't.
Yeah, they sort of look like the same globe.
They're probably twice the size.
They're, uh, I don't know if they're quiet, but they're, they're close, and it's, it's just all lights that you don't see that.
So, I think we've gone full circle, and we're giving you, sir, delaying you unintentionally for sure. I think, for sure, this needs to go back to the planning commission for them to put their stamp on it. Tell, tell us what they are suggesting that is the right planned lighting for that street, or any street in a residential area, and then-
A lot, I'll agree with you, this is a, that's retarded in. This is coming in after the fact, but if that's what you want to do, that's all we'll do.
Well, the street's in, but the lighting, it still has to be lit according to city ordinance or something. You can't not light it, sir.
What is the ordinance?
That's what I'm trying to, I don't know.
But what I'm saying is we're backing up.
Correct, that's why, full circle here.
My name, it's always been said, as per the, so, the street director, did the street director previously say that it's going to be street language to the square line?
No, the street director gave him direct instructions to put up whatever he pulled, he didn't talk about the pole, he didn't care about the pole, told him to put LED lights up. So as far as he's concerned, and, and understandable, so, he can go put up some wooden poles to match what's in the neighborhood, and put LED lights on them, he's good. And I don't disagree with that, because that's what he was told by a city employee.
But, but wooden poles will, you can get LED lights on the wooden poles?
Yeah, I can, I can prove that, but I don't want it to say that, because I haven't bet with somebody.
I would just say, you were talking about that their poles wouldn't-
The decorative pole that they have in stock now-
Oh, Swetco?
If not yet, REA, if not LED, and according to James, they will not interchange. And that's what I went back to Dennis with, I said, "I'll do, we'll do whatever you want, but it will not interchange." And he said, "I want the LED," so that's what we had planned to do.
I, I'm kind of, and I'm just, I'm just being, seeing your side and seeing the city's side, that we don't have in writing what we ought to have in writing, and we're working on getting that, I, I, and I'm not giving you permission, because that's up to these guys in the planning commission, that maybe you ought to be able to put up what's already out there, get your LED lights up, and then later, if the city decides to, to change them, we'll change them.
I think that, I think maybe we need to just kind of look at it right now, and look at some type of a compromise, you know, to see. I mean, I guess if he's talking about what Dennis said, you know, yeah, shame on us for not having it in, in writing, you know? But I would think there's, certainly there's much more LED lighting alternatives now than there were, you know, five years ago, and they're just kind of the model of time, you know, and so I think that we can maybe kind of work out some type of-
The decorative lighting in the square can be retrofitted LED, it is now, those lights are LED, I'm, I'm-
Well, my understanding, they are, and-
Well, at least the-
Not all, yeah, and, and I believe, who was the, uh-
Richard?
I was the other-
No, not that guy.
I think that's, the 100, Seth.
Oh.
I think Seth, I think, just like we're talking about the light out here in Park Lot.
Yep.
Strobin did the same.
Right.
It's something that we have to get Seth to look at, because it's not just a, a bulb issue.
No, no, we, they changed, there was, there was-
And I think Seth has, has went in and looked at that, and it's just like, well, they did it, but it's, it's like, it was a mess.
I just don't know that we have in, in place at this moment. I totally agree, I mean, I, my vision of a new street in Greenwood is to be decorative lighting, all the things that we've always talked about as long as I've sat here in, in my park's duration. But we don't have something to absolutely force that upon the person that's doing it. We're kind of stuck, or we make a compromise for it. The reason I brought up LED, Mr. Terry across the street from you, you requested a couple of years from me to put some LED lights up through the water.
Yeah, I did.
They're in place, that's, that's the LED lights that Arkansas Valley, I believe that's Arkansas Valley, there usually-
Yes.
Those lights are, are what?
Yeah, they would be, I think there's three, well, all of them are changing, or-
There's three new, three LED, we had a bet with your daughter, how long it take you to notice it?
I noticed it going, going, like we had a meeting system. Yeah, appreciate it.
Yes, sir, I would-
Well, I appreciate it.
Sure, absolutely, what makes you say that's the whole point?
I'd say that we worked it out, since, it was like, you know, there was a miscommunication there, I'd say that, uh, instead of us letting them put up wood lights, and then say, "Okay, we're going to come back, you know, two years later, whatever, and replace," I was, let's just go ahead and kind of do the difference, you know, with a compromise, and put up what, you know, we think should be there.
I don't have any problem with wooden poles. So, that's what's in the neighborhood.
While the planning commission do your thing, bring it back in, in order, we'll visit with Mr. Lloyd, and I'm not, I'm trying to work something out, see what we come up with. He's here, he's here to be a neighbor, good neighbor, for sure, or he'd already stepped forward here, and this one, I'll pass business, so. But I think it's imperative important that they get something for us, for you guys to look at, and be done with it.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Did you have anything else regarding that? Thank you, sir.
So what's action here?
No, no, I'm not.
Yeah, no action on the order for it.
Hey, and by the way, this, yeah, I was gonna, I was going to exclude this project, this was not about that project, this was about to make sure we got our ducks in a row for the next project.
So, so I guess just that, if somebody comes in with a project, or we already kind of have one-
We're going, we're going to be in the same boat we're in, but that man will come to me and say, "What do you want to do about this lighting on your street?" Right?
So, I guess, what you're saying of it was the one that's proposed out there, you know, due to from Scott, uh, Scotty Drive, whatever, down there, like, I see one that's being proposed.
Area 251?
Uh, it is.
The flat?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're nowhere near, I mean, time frame's not, that doesn't affect that, right? I mean, you guys already put a pole in the ground on area 251, East, East Village.
Oh, no.
So, yeah, we will, that will not fly under the radar.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Now, you can tell me, you've got plenty of time to do an ordinance before we're going to be ready.
Because I want those pretty stop signs that's there too, John. Okay, that was a lot.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
Do we go ahead and put up street lights, or do we wait? That's all I want to know.
Wait, don't-
There's people moving in.
When do you have residents coming in?
They're moving right now.
Right this minute?
Next minute.
Everybody can take their car out there and park it on the road.
I mean, we were, we were basically waiting until the sidewalk before-
Well, if this, if this commission, if this council wants to vote, I mean, that's up to this council meeting, if they want to give you a blessing or a no-plea, or something, I, I guess that's up to them. I don't feel a little-
My, my thing is, and I live in that neighborhood, I mean, wood street lights are already involved, correct, so, and- But you can't say that with any adjacent, you're probably going to be next to another adjacent tree.
And I would say, on behalf of Mr. Powell, and I'm, I'm not going to take it, he's not here, so.
Well, my thing is, and also is, I mean, there was nothing in writing, the plan was approved, but giving direction on what kind of street lights.
The only thing that isn't writing is that he would match, I'm paraphrasing Hunter, help me, he would match what's there. And to this point, what is there is a wooden pole on each end of that street, right, or on the other end, side. Is it on the street or on the?
One on the street and on where it rode.
And on the other side of where?
The wooden pole is on the street behind us, on where it rode.
I mean, the LED is approved, and of course, there are eight, so.
Definitely.
I mean, are you looking, is everybody looking both ways?
I mean, I, I want to, I want to tell you, Sean and myself is the ones not going to get in a specific contest with you. We just want to know what y'all want us to do.
I mean, it would be preferable if you put up decorative poles with LED lighting, but- Can we, you and I, I mean, I don't know, if they, if they want to vote on that, then they'll vote, I mean, it's up to them, but-
I vote for decorative lighting with a LED fixture.
But when you say decorative lighting?
Yeah, there's-
Decorative lighting lights on the square.
So to replicate what's on the square?
Like a metal pole with LED light on it?
Yeah, it's, it's-
Because I mean, one that the city all could consider decorative, right?
Well, if you're talking, so if you're saying specifically like the ones on the square, that's very specific.
Yeah.
That is not like the ones in, in the parking lot.
But I think the ones on the square, that, Michael John-
He was the architect.
Was the architect and all that, and I think that, how long ago was that?
That pole, I can tell you this right, absolute, without a shadow of a doubt, that particular pole, exact model, is not available.
Right.
You can get a pole that drive by it, and not go there.
Close to it.
And the globes, the globes themselves are un, unattainable.
Yes.
Uh, but you can get another one, and I'm not trying to sway anybody, you can get another one that nobody, I mean, they're, they're five miles apart. So you could get another one that would look very similar, and, and I think, to just keep what REA says, but you can, pretty sure you can get all the, an LED. Are the ones on Denver Bridge, the exact, yes, back then, we were able to get them.
Is there a call for subdivision that you could come to and say?
There's subdivisions, Buddy, Buddy, there would be two, the one in, down here, not in Greenwood.
Yeah, so that we could say, do it like that.
Not in Greenwood, because this is a new, this is new, there's not many brand-new roads built since the Oaks. The Oaks has decorative, but not light what's down here town. There are different decorative.
And look good.
Sure, there, there's all kinds of decorative. The ones that you had, I mean, the ones in this parking lot compared to a wooden pole are decorative, they're just not that kind of-
I need to hear it then.
Yeah.
I want to address what AC was, I, I talked to the manufacturer when I was trying to get globes, and you have to go, you, I can't buy a pole or, or the globe from the manufacturer, I have to go through a rep, a, uh, electrical supply to get to the rep to, to see, and they told, they told us it was, I, because I called them direct, because I was just going to order them direct from the manufacturer, and we can't do that, we have to have an electrical person supply to order them, and they said they were obsolete. That, and so, that was just addressing what you, that particular, that particular style, there's other styles, like you said, that are that far away, because that may be what I'm looking at, even on-
Right, similar.
Similar, similar, but-
Well, I can't declare, I'm just sitting here and telling a guy that's ninety-three percent done with all these houses, "Now you have some decorative lighting, they're sorry, we messed up." Not here till eleven, till a half hour, or whatever. I mean, there's a lot of policy of orders, and like you said, it's one thing for this East Village, if we want to try to catch up, waiting to do with the sidewalks, the tree ordinances, as the Clemens put all their stuff in, we're like, "Oh, we forgot to do that," and we kept trying to catch up. That's fine, sometimes we don't have those in place, but meanwhile, at this point, we've already got people moved in, and I'm, I have to drive by every day, pretty much, but I mean, it's not going to bother you ever, the wood lights, it's not, sure they're lit, it's, our jobs are like the streets, but we're safe.
Mr. Lloyd, how are you determining if you were to give, give approval to put up a, a, a LED light on a wooden pole? It really is irrelevant if it's a wooden, I mean, it is very relevant, but if you're going to put up an LED light that they're recommending, are they, the power company, telling you the placement of those poles, or the, or the amount, and how many you need?
Oh, actually, I actually want, whenever we begin a project, the distance of the street with, with the wooden pole at the other end, we're going to put two on the same side.
Right, I guess my question is, who determined, I mean, does this seem like the right thing to do, to put two lights?
Sean and I did.
Okay.
We were going to put two on the side where the duplexes are now, with the one that's already on the end, and then we were going to go between those and put two on the other side, which is going to give them better than subdivision.
Sure. Sure.
So I guess this point is. We know that it's decorative, we'll put two on the side of duplexes.
Right. I mean, the, the power company, this is a question I exposed, maybe not, wooden poles, we're talking about them running power above ground.
No.
You're underground, sure, that's good.
Good.
That's plus. Decorative pole would definitely be underground. So if you're going to go underground with these wooden poles, it's just going to be the light. Does power company not dictate to you? I mean, I don't know. I guess I'm asking a silly question, the distance of that. I know, I know for instance, well, the poles were already there. We added three LED lights out in front of Mr. Terry's house for walking purposes on sidewalk.
Mayor, the placement is also something that the street director approves.
Okay.
They approve the number and the placement of all the streetlights.
You're going to do that according to, uh, utility?
No, that's what I was saying, great lighting, I mean.
That's what it says in the subdivision regulations, that that's a street department?
I mean, that's in, I'm acting like I never looked at this stuff, and I haven't. That's going, that distance is going to be in our, our own regulations.
The quantity, the direction and pattern is established by the street director.
Okay. What's the cost difference? What's the cost difference? All I can tell you is back when we did the, the squares, those poles were approximately fifteen hundred dollars a piece. That was fifteen, twelve years ago.
Compared to, I don't know.
Well, Arkansas Valley's going to provide the gold now, right?
We're paying for them.
Oh, you are? How much is, if you don't mind, was a wooden pole?
Don't, they just told me how much.
Okay. I don't, I don't answer that.
I think, I'm going to deal mine, my point, my point is, the lighting is for the safety of vehicle travel and pedestrians. And, in my opinion, we make it harder for people who go here, there's not every town that requires a decorative lighting that looks better. Now, if they want it to be an upscale development, I'm right, but we don't want to make it harder for development, I'm, I'm serious. I'm making it harder. Just hunting, that's the assumption.
Pretty important. So what's the council desire to, this evening, or we have, the folks that are here to give instrument?
I'd like for us to, I'd like for us to see how, uh, easily it is to get the, you know, a decorative lighting in there. And, uh, yeah, we negotiated, you know, paying the difference since we're not, uh, since we didn't have it, you know, in, in writing, you know, designed theirs, like they're actually new and they're going with the, uh, the construction of it and stuff, so.
I'd say it would pay the difference. So you're saying, possibly the cost, wooden pole, would cost ten, we, we'd be the city, you're suggesting the city pay the difference in the decorative pole?
Right.
Okay, any?
Mr. Henry.
That's like private.
Oh, an enterprise?
An enterprise. So, I know that, that poles are for public, but still, it's a developer's cause. Did you hear the question?
Here.
Did we develop the road, or develop, develop the road, or develop, or build the road?
Never.
Yes, it becomes ours once it's, right? Did you build it?
Yes.
Yes, sir, chief?
Uh, the only problem I would have is very tall, wooden lights has to do with those big triplexes and all the story in our area. That's why we don't allow power lines anymore, subdivisions.
Yeah, it's okay.
I think it's be buried.
They are.
I'm just talking about the power poles sticking up in front of the buildings that are at a certain height. If they're the size of the decorative lights out here, we don't have a problem with hitting that with the aerial or with, uh, anything like that.
So the taller the poles, the worse?
Taller the poles, the worse. Problem that it, problem that it is for us, we have fire in the areas. So I, it'd be, in the future, what if it be on the side of the decker? I'm not sure, we're going to do one of theirs, but, uh, we would prefer to have stuff that's going to be.
That you can get bust.
Exactly. Instead of something like, uh, Main Street for there's tall, tall solid tower.
Right, okay.
Well, I mean, you just got to dodge it. We have trees out there, you're being, I mean.
Well, I mean, that's why we have apartments, and this is a screw up. That's why we have apartments for, uh, all the, uh, the community buried now, and all of our areas going into the building and stuff like that.
Well, I'm, I'm good with, well, I'm, I don't know how to swing that. If we want to put decorative lighting out there, we're going to be putting buildings on it.
We don't want, no. Or to the city attorney, says no.
Yeah, they do what?
City attorney says no, what to, to pay. The city. Okay. Motion before anything.
I'll make a motion to allow them to proceed with finishing their streetlights project on the wooden drive, however they see fit.
Per guidance, street director, Chad Brown.
Per.
Per guidance, Chad.
Per guidance, yeah, in our ordinance, wherever the three, we have some rule, I'm sure about streetlight.
Have the motion? Second. And second.
Mr. Brown?
And what is the motion exactly?
Just let them continue to develop their property however they see fit.
Finish the street lighting only when drive, probably see fit with Mr. Brown's direction.
And, and past directions, it's been, you know, we've said that we like the decorative lighting, you know, that looks similar to the square.
We, we have said verbally, but we have nothing in writing.
Correct.
And that's, and that's, that's five, six sets of eyes looking at all, and to make sure that we're not overlooking something. Mr. Powell being one of them, he, he has never called me back to say it's not there, but he's acknowledged on the phone with Mr. Terry. But she can't find it, nobody else can.
Come on, about, I'm the only one that wants to be lighting.
Right. So the motion, second, over vote?
Yeah, Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Eric Kinzel?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yeah.
Pass the thought of the words.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number eight on our agenda is, uh, please park it in that typical discussion.
It did not pass, no, because it's three, even though it's three out of four, it's got to be four of six. It did not pass. Sorry, I was wrong.
Was that the pass in the throw? Even make you. Go first.
It does, no. I don't know, back square or one?
That vote failed due to us having this argument.
Yeah.
Would you win? I can only vote from the back.
You did vote back.
I did ask.
Like, there's going to be four of six. That's a majority here. Four of six of this body.
That's correct.
And that was only three of four.
On the mayor voting, it's the, 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 whatever he votes, we need to pass something.
What's that do?
Well, the vote wasn't needed to pass because.
With the two.
Two to one.
So that. Okay. Okay. I didn't do well, man.
The council member present, they voted yes.
Right, right. Okay.
I don't know if you guys have questions after Phil, but.
Does that make sense? It did, it did not, it did not pass. The vote was three to one, but it did not pass because of you. Would you say that again?
Yes. We have unusual situation tonight. Used to, fifteen, twenty years ago, we would not be able to have a speech at festival. This is mayor to count as a, uh, member of the county elected forum. Uh, there are three other members here. However, law also says that he can only vote, uh, whenever it's, his vote is necessary to pass something. And in order to pass something, it has to be by a majority vote of the elected council, which means four out of six. And so, we, you would have to have everybody voting unanimous tonight that we're here for, uh, this to pass. So all three council members would have to vote yes. And then the mayor's vote would be necessary to pass it, so he would have been able to vote. But since there was a two to one, really the mayor was not even entitled to vote, you know, he did, to show his support.
Well, he's elected forum.
Yeah, but, uh, that, that is not good.
Well, and I stick, I say, it makes sense to me that this is a six-person body, and the majority is four of six, even though all six are present.
Right.
And that was a three-one, so it's not a majority. That's why it didn't pass, in my.
It's not, it's not about two tiers.
That's not really a three one, it's a two one, because the mayor's not counting though.
At the risk of anybody hearing me saying this, though, if you put them in the bar, you're not breaking any law. For the record. For the record.
Question?
Question?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Henry, clerk of the night? Chief?
I have a question, Mr. Henry. To start this conversation off, and he just lost the third officer this year, who has no one left. And he's the third one to leave law enforcement altogether this year. I'm sure you've watched the news, with shortage of police officers. Typically, for one open position, we say fifty applicants. Now, we get generally seven or eight. Uh, of those seven or eight that come in the application, two people, uh, two people showed up to the fitness test, uh, last Thursday. Uh, of those two, one didn't even get around one quarter of the track before, uh, he was walking in and eventually was stopped due to medical reasons, appeared he was going to have some type of episode. So now we're down one for those three open positions. I'm not sure what's going to take the change, um, getting more applicants, but, uh, we're trying to think outside the box to find people to fill these positions. Uh, at the very least, uh, we have one leaving for the academy in, uh, September. That has been that F E O, which typically is not the process, the, the border process, I would think, typically they go to the academy and then we have a F E O, but we're trying to tar that knock down, so F E O and maybe one academy when he gets out, then, uh, they'll do a shorter, shorter F E O, get them out the street and, and help. Uh, Officer Stewart, this week is leaving for Germany as he's coming with his military. And, uh, that puts us really down five people, uh, right now. So thinking outside the box, I have a nephew that has graduated college with two bachelor's degrees, one in criminal justice and one in, uh, management management supervision. I also have a cousin's kid that I tried to get to come here, but he's now Maryland state trooper. And I have several family members that are in, uh, law enforcement. And, uh, my nephew is actually willing to come down here, uh, but I'm talking to the mayor and, uh, also Danielle, the policy handbook does have a titled, portion of the handbook, that says personal relationship in the workplace. That does talk directly about hiring family members and, and, uh, how that conversation, uh, it appeared to me that there, there might be a problem with me doing that hiring. I have, I often have talked to him, and, uh, he's a good person, has, he's had thirty years of law enforcement experience, that, uh, we've thrown things back and forth and talked about rank push stuff and police stuff, and, uh, he's a good friend to have, and someone to ask about law enforcement related items. Now, without asking him to do anything, Rick being the person he is, he's, uh, he's got a little, uh, presentation about nepotism and law enforcement. If you mind listening to just a couple minutes, then I'll finish up on what I have to ask you.
Before we get started, I would just note, we're living in a very unusual, uh, uh, I have a secretary that left. And I, it was like fourteen to give anybody their interview, what they did interview, they said, well, they were going to wait until they're informed and ready now, and then they might be interested in the job. And that's where we live in now. You look everywhere, yourself on the side, and nobody's going to be good with jobs. And law enforcement is a critical area. Uh, and, uh, if I was really in the attorney field, uh, I can imagine law enforcement is going through at this point, and I'm convinced that law enforcement wages are usually very low, and they don't attract any current out anyone, so. Anyway, I sympathize with Chief Dawson, and likewise, at breakfast, uh, this morning, Mr. Gabbard and had one prior morning, so he spends my air every once in a while. He's already left my air on this one as well. So, I didn't know that he was going to come and speak, but I suggested that y'all have a little bit of notice before hanging, but we're here.
Nobody would show up, I'm kidding. Mr. Gabbard, if you please, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Mr. Terry, and Mr. Henry. Uh, some of y'all know me so much, gentlemen, I have about thirty-eight years in law enforcement. I've served as law enforcement in the military, private home industry, local police departments, parish and county police departments, was now state police, and I retired after twenty-seven years in a federal practice special agent. And during that time, I have not only worked with, I have worked for relatives in my past. As you noticed, it, it's American tradition, you know, when they're looking at emergency service workers, armed policemen, E M Ps. They kind of follow them in their family split steps. It's, it's a family tradition. I mean, I don't, I don't seem to show blue books. It's kind of far from that. I said, I, I had a sergeant that was my cousin, and he was the hardest person I had worked for. But in law enforcement is, and that's what we're talking about here. I mean, this could be far reaching of what you're looking at as far as it comes down to who supervises. Anybody that receives any remuneration is considered an employee. So that could affect any of your family, since you are actually employed. And go with a chain of command. But generally, in law enforcement, firefighting, things like that, you have a chain of command. It's very local here. Not only you have a patrolman, you go to a corporal, and then you go to a sergeant, then to lieutenant, captain, generally takes care of all the disciplinary and all the handman things. And the chief is more of a figurehead for budget, shaking hands. Okay? Generally, day to day, the chief will not administer any type of discipline. And in fact, if they ever got to there, it can be generally, uh, too bad. Uh, and like I said, for instance of that, you can come down to a lot of these that are all American traditions, a family, military. You know, what a general author wouldn't have been able to join the military because of who's father was. And the same with all of these incidents. Like, what you really have to go back and ask yourself, now, and I've got several examples I found out in police work, just like, uh, uh, let's see, it's Goldfield, I think in Missouri, or the police chief, not only young, and five of his brothers were on the police department, I mean, the fire department, but several of his nephews, things like that. And those were all volunteers, so that's a different, different category. But today, that same chief is there, he has two of his sons that work for him, that are full-time, firing his niece and his brother-in-law. So when you're talking about getting something like that, you're talking down to, uh, receive nepotism. If somebody that's unqualified, they get to favor. Okay? If, if there's somebody that's unqualified, eh, no, no harm. But you gotta ask yourself a few questions. I have a lot of notes here, I'm not going to read them all. Uh, you gotta consider, when you're asking yourself on perceived nepotism, when you consider denying an applicant, basically, you're affecting him, his entire family and the community. They're the ones that lose, because generally, when someone comes from a family of law enforcement, firefighters or E M Ps, they're generally good, they have a standard to uphold, not only to the community, they have a standard to uphold to their family tradition. And like I said, it's like a military chain of command. You don't jump your chain of command. You do that, you're going to get yourself in a fire. So, one thing to consider is, can you afford to deny any qualified applicants or candidates to be a law enforcement officer with vacancies today in the recruiting department? I'll tell you personally, with the environment today, I would have chosen a different career. I love the job I've done, always had it, always will, but I would, I would recommend to young people now not to do it. to young people now not to do it. Because they only, every time they walk out the door, they not only quit themselves, they put their entire family in likelihood and financial stability at place there. So you have a qualified applicant, I don't see why you should tell them you can't work through because of your, your bloodline. But if there's a problem with something in the perceived, uh, going in standards and not following the, the chain of command, there could be a big issue. This has happened here in the past before. This is not the first time something like this is coming up. Chief Jackson, he employed his brother-in-law. Didn't work out great, but he employed his brother-in-law. He also, he had, he employed his, uh, ex-wife's new husband. And you actually have a lot of departments and agencies, you have married couples, that's considered nepotism. What if one of them has to take orders from the other? I grew up, like I said, in law enforcement, as long as a lot of people did. When somebody told me that was my boss to do something, I did it. Where it worked, where it worked. When we're home, we're home. And you have to deal with them to have that communication. And in fact, my family would be much harder on me than somebody that doesn't, you know, my family. So, in conclusion on that, basically, like I said, questions answered, is denied or adopted law enforcement officer the same opportunity to follow a family legacy? Is that fair? Just on perceived, that it might be, when you're talking of a highly qualified individual. I don't know how many applicants you had at this time, but I used to also rate points when I volunteered, I reviewed applicants. And I hired and curmated many people that worked for me. And threw applications from one side to another. One, just because of the way it's written. Number two, the dedication, how much time are you going to take to put into it? The pay here, it's okay for a law enforcement officer. A young officer can turn around and go to a federal agency, such even as the border patrol started out at sixty-five, seventy thousand a year when he walks in the door. So when you have somebody that comes here to be dedicated and you want him to stay here, that's something different to look at. But if somebody that I hired, when I did it, in fact, several people I did hire, who did that take my job when I retired? I was very proud of them, they became better than I ever was. And their tradition is growing up. Now their kids were law enforcement. And like I said, I have worked for relatives and in the federal government, I worked for a whole bunch of them when I lived in Louisiana. It was a small town, suburbic size of Greenwood. And we had a federal prison system there and an immigration office. In the immigration office, we had almost eight hundred employees. Okay? I can tell you just in one section about any of them were brothers and sisters. And some of them were the boss, never a problem. Work was work, play was play. So I think all this should be looked at on a case-by-case basis. I don't think you can go across the board and say, you know, when you look at the definition of nepotism. And generally, there's exceptions all over the country. I looked at all throughout, every state in the United States, there's always exceptions for our communities under thirty-five thousand people. So I'm just going to rest in my case in that, that I think that individuals should be looked at, I think their quality, like I said, whether they stayed or not. If somebody didn't want my job, I wouldn't want them. A lot of people come to this community, in fact, I have another sister-in-law, and I wrote that's good. But they're looking here in the next couple of weeks, because they love it here. I brought my nephew up here, he loves it here, and so then, my daughter lives here, I've been here almost twenty years, I am given, nobody here. Okay? I'm here because I want to. I like Greenwood, love Greenwood, it's a very safe community, and that's one of the things that bring people in here. I ran into a gentleman in one of the neighborhoods over here recently, and I said, hey, I hear you from Mike Charles. And he looks, he comes walking out there, he looks at me, he goes, hey, guy, I say, I think I know you, didn't you used to be with the state police? I said, yeah. And so, we have a lot of people here that move from Louisiana, you have more moving here. You have people moving from California all over. There's a reason they're coming here. So don't be the reason. And I'm saying this is not a safe or an open environment. I think that on a case-by-case basis, should be looked at on something of this nature. No matter whether it's police department, whether it's one of your children, whether it's a fire department, it's, it's very broad, but whatever decision y'all look at on this can be far reaching. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard.
I don't know that all that was necessary, but I think Rick has some valid points and he took the time to do that for me, so I wanted him to say his piece and give mine. Justin Dawson is my sister's son. If I remember correctly, he's twenty-two. Obviously, I left New Jersey a long, long time ago, so I wasn't there for Justin's upbringing, but obviously we do stay in contact mostly through Facebook. And he's always been very polite with me and respectful. And basically, you know, I wouldn't want to be a police officer in New Jersey, it's one of those places where it's not under the police officer and the respect isn't there in law enforcement, the appreciation isn't there. And talking to him, I've always talked to him, I first, had no intentions trying to get him down here and fly for us, but he's taking the state police test next month, or August. And there's a couple of departments, I've pointed them towards, I felt with the heat and proper training. But with the recent circumstances, losing a third officer that, that were all experience officers, I mean, we're losing experience, and it's not to other agencies. Joe was going to a private business that's going to pay him a lot of money. He's been, he gives off. Eric went to a contract business that works for government agency, but he's making a lot more money than he's giving weekends off. And Josh went longer and he's making a lot more money, he's giving weekends off. And I sat down with all three of those guys and told them that in today's climate and just the lack of respect in law enforcement, I can't sit here and lie to you and say I don't blame you. We do need good officers to hang in there and, and try to tread water through this time that the country's in and just not have the respect for law enforcement. And, and hope that enough of us come through the other side, that we didn't employ people that don't mean to be in this profession. But these big agencies are filling positions with people that never would have got hired ten years ago. And that's the facts. They're having to fill positions because they have to, they've got to have bodies out there for the high crime areas. There's people, I guarantee you, there's people on this profession that one got hired by that saving agency ten years ago. But there is a small percentage of those police officers through all of this active and probably on that beautiful hunt right now, I'll be, I mean, on paper, two bachelor's degrees, going to be the most qualified person that we had for navigation in the last two cycles. He still has to interview him, he's still got to do a fitness test, but I wasn't going to bring him down here to do those. Without prior acknowledgement from you guys or okay from you guys, that he is the person that is top on all lists to be hired, which isn't much of a list right now, but that I didn't do something that wasn't favorable from you guys. The interview process with him, I'm not going to be in there. What questions they ask, I remember the same ones I assume I asked everybody else, but I am not going to be in there, so there's not any way it could be assumed that it's favorable the way I ask the questions or anything. It's, it's just, I do feel that I don't need to be in there for that interview, and they can make their decision off of their observations and I don't have any influence on, on that and that, so they can talk amongst each other. After the interview, it's going to be a video interview, which we're looking at another one also with another person that's in the academy right now that wants to leave their agency to ours. But we are reaching out in places that we never had to before, trying to find people to fill these positions. I've only been one, one of the places I've reached, I've got an uncle that was chief police in hometown, like I said, my cousin's always a Maryland state trooper, Justin just finished college. And he actually wants to go down there and talk to his fiancee into it, so with your blessing, and like I said, he may not be the one that's hired for an interview, uh, someone Wednesday also, not much, but someone from another agency that's from local, hopefully going around here, but they pay more than us, we're a smaller agency, but I think, hopefully we can persuade him to come to Greenwood, just because of, I think, the community and how much they respect law enforcement, because it learned the works and they paid more, but they don't have the respect down there that, that we have here or does support. But I think tonight to ask you that you do agree that if he is the most qualified and he does pass the background like everybody else, he does pass physical like everyone else, and he's on the list in the top three, that it's okay to hire him, even though he's not. And for future dealings with him, I am always the last saying discipline, you know, that is decided by the lower administration. And when it's finalized and sentenced, maybe they say, this is what we, this is what we suggest for discipline. If the chief doesn't reject that discipline and want an administrative hearing, then basically I say I agree with that discipline, I sign off on what happens. If they don't agree with discipline, then he has a disciplinary hearing and I sit in on that and I listen to both sides and why that shows that discipline, why he doesn't think it's fair, and I make a decision off of that. But Captain Wolf will be the final, Captain Wolf will take my place if there are pain to that, and Justin will listen to hire. So I think it's going to be harder for him to come in and do the job because of who he is. I mean, just, everyone's going to look at him as the chief's nephew and, and I hope they don't think he got the job because of me and they do pick him because he is the most qualified to bless your streets. And I haven't made a secret about that, he's been in the academy until he finds a place himself for the first month, he's going to stay upstairs. Great. And September, if he's hired, it should all depend on when he gets back, he's going to get a place for his fiancee to come down and, and they're going to go down here and go try. So I, I thought about, it's going to be tough on him, I think the usual African or officer just because of who he is, but he accepts that and he knows that and he's willing to do it anyway. So I know, this is basically a discussion with the policy, I don't know if you know about it, if those state of the run, those employees may be hired under certain circumstances, strictly associated with hiring the most qualified African or any of those job agencies. However, no employee will hold a direct supervisory position over his or a relative, regardless of the relationship and regardless of whether by, I don't have a license, I don't have another word, you know, it's a different, I don't know. Or operational law, if you look at that, I can just...
Well, we'll have to...
I've got it right here. Consec- get?
I don't know, I'm embarrassed to say, I don't know the word, I've found a degree...
Consec- getty?
I believe so, yeah.
I think it's the word you're trying to...
I have it pulled up as well.
Is this out of our part?
Yes.
Our handbook, city or...
And we don't, at least currently, we don't have a nepotism policy, like Rick has pointed out, on the enforcement, two chiefs ago, his son worked for him with their enforcement before he left the FBI. And if it does happen around here, you're going to bar on the chief, hire his son along. The only thing I'd hate for Justin to have to take on is that someone thought he got the job because of who he is, not because of his credentials. But that's something, like I said, he's willing to accept that he's taken the challenge of it, so.
That's the only drawback I can see in the whole thing. I understand what the policy reads. I don't have any problem with hiring a kid, I'm just, the only problem I see is just a morale deal. If he gets hired as a patrolman or if he gets hired as a sergeant, you know, I'm, you're saying...
Everyone gets hired as a patrolman.
Well, that's my only, that would be the only drawback I can see is if he got pumped up the chain real quick and, because, I mean, whether it's your nephew or not, even if anybody off the street, I guess, if you're proud of him, and, I can see the morale...
For me, that's a big block for it, after two years and four months. Not that I don't want my job, it's just, I think it's time for me to devote more to the family and find some type of profession where I am at, which I'm sure I need to be at for a future out past. But I've gone on twenty-five years in the profession and I've had quite a bit, I feel, I still enjoy serving people and I'd probably find someone better down there, I still serve people, but...
In your past three years, you promised you'd stay.
That's right. And I do appreciate you a lot, maybe you left the National Academy, I think that's a highlight of many officers' careers, I guess, because the academy is less than two percent of officers, so.
Well, I mean, I, I, I know, obviously, a can of worms is probably going to get involved in this over the old, but, uh, I don't, just like Mr. Hamby says, these, this, these times, you know, it's, I don't, I don't think, I mean, we're, obviously, we're not the same part of the America that's having the biggest one. There's a lot of bunch of these, uh, the cop chant going on out there with pitchforks and torches, but I understand why, how it's tough for people, I don't, it's not just greed, but not because we don't pay it, but it's because nobody was a good cop or a riot out there, or EMT or whatever, every season, but I don't have any problem with this, like I said, or said, somebody on the variance, let me get variance, store and move.
I would, I would know that I did give an email to the governor individuals here that did want to be called, Greenwood Police Department. Yeah, about a fifteen-page letter, reasons to...
Need what?
We needed to pay up the Greenwood Police Department.
Didn't email me.
I think I got time to do that.
Yeah.
Didn't email right back.
When you're in jail, Rick says, you know, I, I think it's appropriate to, I'm, I'm great case, great case, odd times, to say the least, to echo what Mr. Hamby has said. I think it's, I think it's my job to ask HR for necessarily opinion and mix that in together with, because we have an HR and I made her a director of HR, so she can pay and use her a little bit, not much, but a little bit. But, but I, I, I see the point and I, I'm like Mr. Terry personally, and I think that's qualified. We have, we have people that are working within the city now that are relatives, okay? So it's not brand new to us, it's not new ground. In, in dire straits, or, I don't know if that's the right word, but in special times, I think you said, take special views, yes ma'am? So do you have an HR point of view?
Yeah, it's just my opinion, I mean, and I'm also conflict of interest, I guess you could say, because I do have a sibling that works here. And while I am not over her and she is not over me, there have been numerous occasions where there have been conflicts and things that would not have occurred with us not being related. And while I completely understand that we do need good officers and I hate that we have officers leaving, um, I don't know if this would be, and it's not my vote, it's just my thought, um, I don't know if this would be appropriate. I do see exactly where Tim was coming, I do see people throwing a fit because the chief's nephew's here and he'll just skyrocket up. I mean, I do understand that we do start them all off with patrolling at the minimum, or the, the minimum pay scale that we've already set up. But being a, a family member who has another family member that works for the city, it's, it's a lot. And I, I, I love that she and I both work here together, but we, we all know that we've had things go on, I'm not the only family member here, we have cousins and I know you're not supervisors, but sometimes that can be a conflict. I just, I think that's just going to put us in a whole nother vein, but that's just me.
I think given the period of that, that chief read, I mean, as long as direct supervision is not, you know, step over that boundary, because we have, we have husbands and wives that work in game and fish, I mean, as long as one of them is not supervising the other ones or is, in a small community, you're never going to get away from it.
I have years of experience in this topic. The two things that you look for is pay and progression. You cannot have control over pay and progression if you have someone working under you, before you. But you can mitigate that a couple of ways. Here... Here, pay is mitigated by you guys because it's in the budget and you have the last say, so you can challenge any, anytime there's any kind of pay that's being afforded which would be out of line, you guys can challenge it and reduce it, so it's transparent, the pay part is you guys. As far as the progression is concerned, he's got somebody under him, now you could say, well, in fact, he controls the person who controls his nephew, any pay, any progression change can be very easily mitigated by saying it has to be approved by the mayor. So right there, you take away, you, you put more restriction on it to say, hey, look, it's gonna be tough enough here, but we have safeguards in place, we've mitigated the nepotism impact. You could do that and those are the two biggest areas right now, everything else falls.
And municipally, I don't, I'm not, I think this thick, this book that we all refer to, refers to this position, not me, but this position, I think, a sheriff and whatnot of, and I'm not, this is about the position, this is not about Doug Kinsler, so I think it's an easy, I, easy, I, I think what you just pointed out on the positioning of him or demotion or demotion, that's just my, I agree with what you said.
One thing that, that you might point out is the day-to-day operation, an officer, a chief here does not assign cars, he does not assign equipment to each individual, there's no preference in what kind of classes or schools you get to go to, that's all done by the lower supervision. Basically, by the time he gets up to the chief, everything is done, he doesn't decide who gets to take vacation, who gets to go and leave, what kind of preference they get, what kind of orders, that's all done by the lower management.
Same also that the, the police chief is supposed to make sure they take their vacations for that.
But I'm saying that goes, he makes sure that his managers are here too, the same as, that's here, he doesn't have a regular supervision on the day-to-day operation against, he can't say, well, new car's coming in, so he's here. That's a, you know, he comes in and goes to the captain, the lieutenant, the lieutenant says he's got a car. Everything for their equipment, glasses, everything, they're in that kind of direction. So it's, it's all in a chain there, so between him and a patrolman, you've got four or five layers, not to mention the council at the top of that, never mind anything.
Don't worry about it. I agree with, you know, the chief, you know, went on this, I think, I think we would need to make it a vote to change the final, the policy vote.
Well, it says.
It says, I mean, for what he read, I mean.
What is that like?
Okay, so direct supervision.
I mean, it says, no direct supervision.
So you're comfortable with it?
I think this would cover you okay, but I would suggest modifying it just to clarify, like I said, that the layer is fine to say and I, I think that that will address the issues because like you said, it's a pay, the council, that's not issue. But what stops, because the layer, he said he was sure.
I've read that somewhere. I just wanted a badge, I can't.
Your chief fought for it.
That's it, that's it, I see shirt. I like the, I like the westerns.
Wider.
Do what?
Wider.
Wider.
Is he giving that?
Are they coming back in with amendment to that, to change that?
Well, I think you're fine if this is what you want approved tonight, I could, I would suggest that the layer at HR, sort of kind of, you know, lift off, uh, this, this, I mean, that I don't think it's a question.
Well, and we're also discussing an unbelievably huge knife changing move for a young lady up there, so it'd be nice to go ahead and give some kind of.
Young man?
His counsel.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's perfect. Jersey Shore, a bunch of rednecks. So.
Oh, she's gonna let us.
Oh, she will, of course. Look, I'm just saying, at least get the ball rolling where he can at least get in the process started, whether he's hired or not.
You make him down here.
Uh, I mean, he gotta try to persuade her to come there.
Right.
I, and I appreciate Danielle supporting you as an HR.
Absolutely.
Red, and not undermining her position at all, but I, I don't see a problem.
No, I just, I just have a different opinion because I have a family member that's here and I don't mind, I'm sure this would be great, getting a shirt would be fine, but I just don't want someone else to have to.
Yeah, but you guys don't get along anyway.
I wasn't going there, but I think we should talk to the big men up here.
The thing about it is, is preference can be shown, but not just between relatives, preference can be shown.
Absolutely.
As a, I mean.
I, I'm fine with it.
Chad, you guys. I just wondered, is there anything in our handbook or policy that defines family?
It does, it does, in the bereavement section it does.
And in bereavement, Hanson Nichols nephew's one included.
Comes from a fourth generation in the state of Arkansas and you're defining that conclude by marriage.
So.
Cousin, fourth cousin is considered.
I have three or four.
Are we gonna talk about the maker?
We did that a month ago. There, where you looked, there's a maker.
He's just well from knowledge of marriage.
So, we're not changing anything yet, we, we can allow this to proceed with a vote or no.
I, I, I was thinking it would be good to have a record to, 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 I don't know if it's.
The police policy, D chain?
Just allowing this.
But what are we supposed to work with? Is this out of the?
Yeah, but that's, that's the other thing, that is out of our handbook for non-uniform.
Police doesn't have it.
Police says police don't have anything that they have.
Yeah, it's not addressed, period.
It's not addressed in there.
That's what I thought too.
That's very good.
Before I got rolling in this, I wanted to gloss it, I asked.
Because they're having cases where we, where the police policy didn't say anything about it, so we said, well, but the civilian one does, so let's go by that, he didn't want that to happen.
Well, I think it is probably something in the, the towns we live in, you know, now that may be addressed, and I mean, we are a small town and, uh, go ahead and kind of address that to, for any future possibility.
So you want it included in the police policy?
No, I was wondering, just, just add, like you said later, to, to what Mr. Handy was saying, you know, to make it where, you know.
Would apply to the, to the.
Yes.
I'll work on, obviously, I mean, as always, two things you can't, it didn't need policies for, so I'm trying to find something in law enforcement that relates to nepotism, but I mean, like Rick said, it's, it's just, first family law enforcement, you have a son, you have a father, there's, there's plenty of enforcement, I know, it just, it's a family thing.
Like Tom's saying, usually, when that's the case, you have descendants following, you know, their, their parents or their grandparents, whatever, it's a hard role for them usually because they, they know that they're more under a microscope.
Well, not only in that perception, they don't really know what they're getting into.
Right.
Because a lot of people that go into law enforcement, especially young married couples that aren't aware of long hours in the middle of the night, do not know where you're at, causes a lot of stress and, and problems, but someone that came from a family in that nature, they don't really know what they're getting into and so you don't have to go back and hold their hand and walk them through the, the small stuff.
Okay, so I don't think you need a literal vote, but I think you have found and heard you have a very strong vote of competence to proceed with yours.
That's all maybe nothing.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm kinda like Mr. Terry, she may hate, not like us all, so.
Well, Tom will tell, as long as she's got a good school to finish her master's degree is what she's all means, she's good.
I'll get the young man down here and see what he thinks.
We'll go through the process and see if that's needed, he's coming down if they say please this.
Okay, he's coming from good stock, so that's very nice, we'd be glad to have him.
Appreciate that stuff.
Thanks, chief. Uh, that is the last out on the agenda, unless I missed something about him before. We get to department reports, several here, any questions for these ladies, gentlemen? Well, ladies gone, Amy, I'm sorry, Danielle's still here, she's a lady.
We can follow up on that example.
We could, just like, yeah, our cities already had, had to excuse themselves, so he's gone. Any questions for department heads, gentlemen, any council, any forum we'd like to discuss, doesn't have any mine fixed. Clock, that would be nice, will it, we'll do that, we'll get some new batteries, I think that's, is that busted, Mr. Tom?
It's not, very many of them are off at this point.
It's a little bit bigger.
I had a request as our citizen about a parking lot, a parking lot there next to Summit that has, I guess, a tobacco shop or something else and there's a vehicle lot open, who's required to fix that property owner?
I have actually instructed at, at, another time for us to go in there and do a little something, something, because it's green wood and I thought it was a nice thing to do and we went around back and took care of one, but we fixed, and I would love to say that we have manpower and money to do that, but if we fixed everybody's parking lot, but it's, it's private property.
Well, that goes back to the vibe I told you.
That's true, that's true.
I mean, so is there orders to require the?
Uh, Mr. Bell, the youth mayor or street, yeah, I have, something in place to fix the parking lot.
You can pay it unsightly.
Thank you, that's always the last resort, the mayor can pay it unsightly. Mr. Handy has left and he advised me to be careful of that, but I don't know if we have any. I think, I think a good point is that not only is that private, which we, we're kinda hands-off, but a good point to take to your citizens complaint is that it's not just folks driving through there to get their goods or whatever, it's our department has to go through there, so does the police department, so it's, it's a hazard, I don't know, we'll look into what the city could, to deem it or something, I'm looking at the people back there.
Thing we've got, like I said, unsightly would be, I don't think of that, that's a stretch.
And, you know, I, I don't know, that's not a good answer, but we, we receive those calls too, I mean, just reaching out to them and asking. Oh, we can do that, we can do that, in fact, in fact, that same building you're referring to, I got a call from, from one of our councilmen who's not here tonight, just tell you that there was, there was some sewage in the, in the back of that building, so we're gonna address that, whoever.
Unsightly.
Unsightly for sure, so.
We'll do something about that.
And I, and we know the owner of the building, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we don't know the owner, we know.
The land manager, we can make that call, so you can tell them, we'll follow up.
Going along with, I was telling the, the paver to the county, if we can have any influence out there on Chisaville Road, you know, that would go a long way, because I've gotten lots of, I've taken out lots, I've got a couple of comments there, they're talking highway ten down to.
Well, maybe that, that, that first bridge right there, they said it's just pretty, there's a, kind of a crop off in the street.
Go ahead. Chisaville, is that? About half hour and half county.
Half county, half city.
Literally, right, that's what I told them, I said, you live on the county side, you know, so it's not, and we don't wanna just disregard it, but.
If you're heading, if you're heading east, going towards fire station, everything on the left-hand side of the city, you can see the curve in the gutter, everything if you're driving out on that particular park around the inside that county.
So certainly, we would take a moment, there was a hazard that was deemed hazardous, that's silly, so we try to do our best, but the best thing, what we will do is contact Jim Carter over there and say, here's, we, we're getting this conflict, we don't know who you are, people assume that's the city's street.
You know, Jim had come in there, I think, two years ago, they were set up to chip seal.
Yeah.
And I believe they had a problem with their chip seal machine and so they kinda pulled out, so, I only had, they had plans to come back, but we were gonna go in, we would supply, we would pay for hacking materials and they would do all the weight rock, but I think the problem we have there is people travel pretty fast, it's narrow, they get off on the shoulders, it's blocking tires.
Well, I would just say that marine fuel tax, since that is a game fish, commission of lake, that is providing access to lake, we ain't looking to that.
Know anybody in that field?
I can't say.
I think James Rocker?
I'd start there.
Is it a meter?
Oh, nope.
I don't know if he is. I got a bigger hat off than that.
On-street issue and Chad and I are not, we're gone out literally and taking this drive, but we keep talking about it, between us, every so often, we're gonna go and look and we know for a fact that we have bad roads in City Greenwood and, and we're, we're trying to do due diligence and they're marking them literally and then putting them on their list over there and trying to get these things knocked out, the more severe at the top and working our way down or their way down, so I think that, I think you're gonna see some differences in being major precincts. I had a guy today calling me about a totally different, nothing to do with this and I'd already seen it and it's, it's a mess over in front of the yard and he was not upset at all, he just, I don't know, you guys can relate to it, so we have, we have some road issues and if I haven't announced it, I will now, that the, I believe we talked about it, I think you mentioned it, the, the software that we have over there, remind me what that's called?
Street logic?
Street, logic, determines that we have about thirty-two million dollars worth of roads to be fixed, so, best to get them in, good, that's not, yeah, so we're working on it, trying to get things one part hole at a time. Yes, sir.
I want to see state highway department, they got three open as well, so.
State highway department?
State highway, I want to talk a little about Tinsburg.
Okay. And the mowing, Tinsburg, you know, all, we all know that as we continue, and I know Mr. Terry loves it when I talk about this, we'll inherit that, that is the city's treatment these days, just made him sick to the stomach, but we'll inherit that and we, we, we occasionally call them, our doc and say, can we, it's a silly question, when are you gonna mow and if you don't, can we, and of course they go, well, have at it, you know, so.
Well, there was a time that they would run us off of it.
Yeah, there was, there, there.
I mean, they seen us brush all again.
Yeah, I did miss some good spray reed. Yeah, and I, I, everybody's up to date on our, I can't remember if we met since we paid the two fifty, two hundred fifty thousand dollars out of our bond, have we met since then? I know we, so, we signed the pay requisition, requisition letter that is, for two hundred fifty thousand dollars out of our bond, with citizens, so wholeheartedly agreed fast, two years ago, I guess now, and that's a big step in getting them some money to get that engineering to start, so we can see what this by traffic relations, almost said the word, traffic relations, it's been always like that here, so it's, it's a, it's a baby step, but it's something, our doc is like, we don't have people calling us baby, they take their money very often, that's why I was doing it, so they, they now, they see it, two hundred fifty thousand dollars out of that bond, I assume.
So they give it time behind us when some kind of problem they may.
Well, we're on the STIP, the STIP program list, if you will, it's a state transportation improvement program, we're listed as a twenty twenty four, I checked, that doesn't mean it's finished, I don't, I don't, it's just there, at twenty-four, our doc, Director Roy Tudor, Congressman Womack, who I bugged again the other day, he runs when he sees me coming, because he'll just send me dollars, that's not, that's a joke, I'm trying to help us out with this project, they all encourage me that they will try to be, get this thing moved up, we shall see, but I hope in my lifetime that we get the same bills and, and and on that day, our doc, I did receive a call from Gil Roger, Gil Rogers, from our doc who is a top engineer and was filling out a grant that our doc is applying for from the federal government to make these projects move faster and they're doing it on our, they're doing some of it on our behalf, but this project in particular is, he said I need to fill out every blank, we don't leave any blank on these federal grant, he needed to know my point of view and what difference this is gonna make to the city of Greenwood and I had that speech down for until about an hour and a half and I said I can, you go by me ten minutes, so I gave it to him and the point I made was this gentleman here and the gentleman deciding, I said, we have, we have subdivision looking to come to Greenwood, I call it Lovingly area two fifty-one, and without this, this new traffic relief project, that would not be probably on anybody's mind, and he teed in and he said, what a great thing for me to put on this deal, on this application, so there's federal money available and they have, he actually liked it, a pretty good idea that they're gonna consent to move this for, this project forward, this tutor ensured me that it was for the whole project, phase one, phase two, however, this gentleman said, I don't know that for sure, but absolutely. However, this gentleman said, I don't know that for sure, but absolutely phase one being new construction from ninety-six, ten, or two, ten, and then widening.
I didn't hear it the same way, I did hear it the way the judge said that it is for ten widening down and that it would be done at the same time. It wouldn't do it.
When he called me back, though, it was a little more, but I said, you don't care. Just get, get all the money.
But Lori did say.
Lori, she was the one that said.
Move it up though. Because they will have to do it, meaning the federal money.
Yeah, right. Lori. L T.
And oh, but we are gonna put Baker to LED lights in there, that will make the green bill too.
Good job. Yes, sir. So anything else for either these directors and or Hunter? Not a director, but he's, by the way, done a great job, kudos to Hunter for making a difference. Casey. Yeah. Code Enforcement Animal Patrol guy's not here tonight, it's also making a big difference, so things are clicking. We're proud of everybody that's working hard, so. Anything else? If not, I would remind, is there anything else? I'm sorry. Please remember all these hopes and your prayers that I mentioned earlier, you know who they are, multitudes of others, the country as a whole. We are needing prayers today, tomorrow. So thank you for your attention, I would entertain motions adjourned.
So I'm gonna.
Thank you. No objection.
No objection.
That's how I expect that.